Do some introductions. And Brian Santanello is back on the council after a little. Gap for a little while.
Twenty-two years.
Twenty-three years. So he brought his expertise back. He and I went to high school together. So here we are. Fifty-four years later.
Nineteen sixty-nine.
It's fifty-five years this year, nineteen sixty-nine.
You were you were voice patrol.
I know, and you were a problem. So Brian is the chair of this committee, but once he was setting up, it's a Health and Human Services Committee. Once he was setting up, he had a meeting on fentanyl and things, other health issues. And I told him that we already had a conversation going here. So he asked me if I would help run this meeting kind of thing. So this is Jamie. And Katie. And Sue. And Jamie and Sue, Jamie and Katie are the. PR department, or what would you call yourselves?
PR and education.
PR and education. Communication and education. So when they go around to civic associations, it's usually the two of them or one of them. And Sue, you're the person who actually does the testing, right?
My staff does, and then I make sure to do all the regulatory reporting.
And Josh is the, Josh is the CEO. What are you?
Executive Director.
Executive Director. Great, thanks. And we have, and this is Ray Warren. He's on the Springfield Housing Authority Board. He used to work in City Hall in a previous life. Way previous, right? And on the, on the line, we have Jose Delgado, lower left. He is a new counselor like Brian. Helen Colton Harris, our Public Health Director, Commissioner of Public Health and Human Services. I guess that's all of us in the middle. Who's that over there? Is that Tom Shea? No, who we got?
Tom Shea is on there. And then we have some of our staff. Jim, Jim Larilla is our Director of Water Operations. Theo Theocles is our Director of Legal Affairs.
Yeah, Theo.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good.
And we have Elise Tarnaskas, who's a process control person up at the water treatment plant as well.
Right, excellent. So Brian asked me if I would run this. I think Mason will. Mostly handle the ball over to you guys. The main issue is, you know, latest update on HA-85. And all the associated issues that go with that. So it's just, there were other issues I had sent to Josh, but this is the main issue. So we'll. We'll focus on that, and you guys have a presentation.
Yeah, we thought because it's a new year, we might have some new members, just to give a refresh really, recap.
We do. We got Brian and Jose.
Yep. And then anyone else who might be watching that might not be caught up on this. So we'll give a little bit of background, give an update, and then we're standing.
Right. And just for, for those that don't know, we probably from before this committee, probably half a dozen times going back. Probably three times the current year, but I mean, we were probably here a couple of years pre-pandemic, so. Twenty eighteen, we've probably been coming to this subcommittee since twenty eighteen sporadically.
Great.
All right, so I had asked if one of my colleagues could share the slide. Not really, because I have an infamy. I just want to see if.
Okay, so I only moonlight is IT, so I'm gonna try my best here. So if something's messed up, Jamie, just shout out to me. I'm gonna press share screen right now. I have this, the slide deck open, so I'm gonna do that. That is right.
Oh, great. And then just put the speech, the slideshow function.
From beginning.
Thank you.
Is this right?
That's very.
Okay.
Great, I'll take it away. So thanks, everyone. I'm Jamie Bartek, Communications Manager for Springfield Water and Service Commission. Everybody, we've done introductions already, so we will plow ahead. So as I mentioned, it's a new year. And we thought we'd give a recap of the situation with HA-85 and give some background information on that. And also. And then talk about what we're doing to resolve it. So Theo, give it advance next slide please. All right, so in, on January fifth, right after the start of the new year, we did send out another public notification. Regarding an exceedance of the maximum contaminant level for HA-85. We have been sending these out pretty much every quarter since twenty nineteen, so it's been about five years now. It's an ongoing issue that we've been working with and addressing. And so I thought I'd just review what disinfection byproducts are and what HA-85 is to start. So HA-85 or halocytic acids is a type of disinfection byproduct. In disinfection byproducts form, when natural dissolved natural organic matter, which is found in any surface water reservoir. Interacts with chlorine that we put into the water to disinfect the water from pathogens such as typhus. Cholera, E. coli, things like that, that would cause an immediate health risk to people. So when we have the dissolved natural organic matter, which I'll describe a little bit more in a bit, in the water, that comes into our treatment plan. And during normal times, if things are working normally, we filter most of that out. And then we chlorinate the water and all as well. But when we have. Heavy precipitation events or excess amounts of dissolved organics in the reservoir, we end up having elevated HA-85. And the reason for this is because our treatment plant wasn't designed to remove enough of the dissolved organics. That need to be removed in order to meet today's regulations. So that's why we have the issue that we have today. Okay, next slide please.
And you guys can jump in with any questions too, because it's pretty informal, so.
Sure. And one of the questions, one of the questions we get is, what do you mean organics? What are we talking about there? So this is just some pictures to kind of to. Show the reality of it really. So dissolved organics are really what washes into the reservoir when rain runs from the forest floor. Into the water. So this is leaves, sticks, things like that, decaying forest matter. Turn into dissolved organics and create like a tea in the water, and then it ends up in the reservoir. Now, these were first discovered, DPVs were first discovered, I believe, in like the nineteen eighties. And then the first regulations were not adopted until nineteen ninety-nine. And then they were again updated in twenty twelve. So just, that's just to keep in mind, because our treatment plant, as I mentioned, can't remove enough of those organics. That was built in nineteen, last modernized in nineteen seventy-four. It was not designed with DPP, today's DPP regulations in mind. It wasn't designed to remove the amount of organics that we need to today. So that's just an important point. Next slide please. So where are we today? So this is the sampling results that Sue oversees from the past year. And HA-85 results are calculated on a running annual average. That means the last, every time we get a sample result, we average it with the last four quarters of sample results in order to get an average. That's how the regulation is written. So these are all of twenty twenty-three sampling results. And as you can see, in the second half of twenty twenty-three, the results started to elevate a bit. And there's two reasons for that. First, if you'll recall, we had a pretty rainy summer. I think it rained every single Saturday. And that went into the fall. So we had a lot more organics washing into the reservoir. We had more extreme precipitation events. That wash a lot in all at once. And the second reason is that we had turnover in the fall, which I will describe. Yes, on the next slide. And sit please. So this is just a very simple demonstration of what turnover is, because we do mention it in the public notification. I don't want to get too deep into the science of this, but in general, what turnover is, is when the different. Temperature layers of a reservoir or any water body. Move throughout the year, just based on seasonal changes. So we had the summer, we had a lot of rain, as I mentioned, we had a lot of organics collecting at the top layers. And then come fall, when we had our turnover, the fall turnover, those top layers moved down into the bottom. And that's important when it comes to our reservoir, because that's where our intake pipe is. So we had a drier fall than we did this summer. But regardless, all the organics that were collecting at the top layers in the summer then moved down. Come November to where intake pipe is. So that's why we see this slide. If you can move to the next slide, please. So I'm not gonna, this is a very, very busy slide.
Spend some time on.
Yeah. We can point out a few things about it. First, in the, the two red circles, that is to illustrate. The effect of turnover. So you'll see November on the bottom row, on the bottom circle. Our precipitation wasn't actually all that bad in November, but you still see a spike at the top of the circle nonetheless. And that's the spike in organics coming into our system. And this is because those top layers from the summer were getting moved down to the bottom near our intake pipe. And then if you look back a little bit more further too, and you'd have to study this a little bit more closely. You can generally see the pattern where if you have a spike in precipitation, usually the next month or two later, you'll see a spike in the organics coming into our system. And that's from the effect of the extreme precipitation events washing a bunch of organics in at once, and then they all end up in the treatment plant. So. I, if you would like to study that, there's lots of detail to go through. Then we have been collecting this data. Pretty, very regularly, and we're tracking it all so that we can see patterns in order to optimize our plant as much as possible. So when we see these things coming, we know we have to start adjusting treatment as necessary. Okay, next slide please. Okay, so resolving HA-85, that's really what everyone wants to know. When is this going to end? But we can say that we have, are doing everything we can to optimize our existing plant as much as possible. And again, it's not designed to. To address these situations. It's not designed to handle the amount of organics that we're getting, but we have optimized it as much as we can. And that includes reducing water age, and that's why we do flushing out in the system. So you might be driving around the city, you might see hydrants that are rushing. Flowing water out of them. That's to keep fresh water pulling into the distribution system. So that we can maintain a chlorine residual without having to add chlorine. And that reduces water age and reduces the time that HA-85 has to form in the distribution system. So we can't do that all year, because of course, we have freezing issues on the roads, but when we can and the weather's warm enough. We will do strategic flushing throughout the distribution system. We also reduce water age in our Provo Mountain Storage Tanks. So those are storage tanks up at Provo Mountain in Agawam that we have underground that maintain system pressure. They're also good for backup emergencies when we have large water main breaks, such as in September. But letting that water sit there, that can create an environment conducive to the formation of HA-85. So we've since added mixers to keep the water fresh and to keep it moving. So that's another, and we also took one of those tanks offline. We determined that we didn't need that much water sitting there. So we also removed one of the oldest tanks there as well. We also sample every single day and calibrate our chlorine dosages. So we just use enough chlorine so that we maintain a safe chlorine residual in the system. And that is very important in terms of preventing any bacterial growth in the distribution system. It maintains a little protection. If we do have those water main breaks and things like that. So we're never going to sacrifice chlorine. Because that's really important to protecting the immediate health of people, because bacteria causes immediate health effects. But we do try to only use the amount of chlorine that we need. So we do that by sampling every single day and adjusting the chlorine levels to just what we need. And then also, one other thing that we do is maximizing the use of the newer parts of our plant. It didn't show up on this slide, but I do, in the handout, I do show you just the general schematic of our treatment process. And at our plant, we have two different types of filters to filter the water. One of them is the rapid sand filters, and those were what was constructed in the nineteen seventies. Those are of course faster, hence their name. And then we also have our slow sand filters. We need the slow sand filters in the summer when demand increases. So when people are outside and they're using water and they're filling up their swimming pools, we have more demand. And our rapid sand filters aren't, can't keep up with that demand. So we may, we fire up the slow sand filters, if you will, in the summertime. And those were built in the nineteen twenties with really like nineteen tens technology. There are large underground caverns of sand. And the reason that's important to know is that because those don't remove as much organics as the rapid sand filters do. Even though those are also not, don't remove enough as well. So if we minimize the use of the slow sand filters as much as we can, we can get more. Organics out than we would if we just did business as usual. So we are constantly strategizing based on demand, based on chlorine need. Based on the weather and whether we can flush and things like that. So this is an ongoing process, but it's not enough. Really, what we found in terms of resolving the HA-85 problem altogether is we need to do the new water treatment plan. And what we found, we've done a lot of planning since about twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. We've been planning on new facilities to adjust our plant, or rebuild parts of our plant, or plant altogether, to address evolving regulations. And the fact that our plant is very old. So we've done pilot testing, both in our, using coagulants. In our rapid sand filtration process, and also pilot testing for any new processes that might work. The best. And what we found is a new treatment step, adding a new treatment step to our treatment process. Will resolve HA-85.
What's that step?
It's a clarification process. It's called dissolved air flotation. It's essentially, it's kind of conceptually like the opposite of filtration. You think of water going down through a media. Instead, dissolved air flotation floats tiny bubbles up to the top. And then that floats the dissolved organic matter that bind to those bubbles, and you skim it off the top. So you do that before.
And what do you do with that when you skim it?
I don't know that answer.
I guess it's a process. Yeah, there'll be a whole residuals process to get rid of the residuals from them and removed.
Yes, so it's called dissolved air flotation. It will be a new step in the treatment process in the new plant. Next slide please. So this is a picture, or rendering rather, of the new plant that we are getting ready to build, and we're very excited. We've been working on this for a long time. Treatment plants are carefully calibrated to the water supply of every single water system. So we can't just go and look at someone's designs over in Worcester, because they have a very different water supply than we do. It's a chemistry project, if you will. So it's taken several years to design this, and we've done lots of work. We also will be replacing a lot of old and inefficient equipment, such as the slow sand filters. So this new plant will no longer rely on the slow sand filters to meet demand capacity. So that is one key part of the new plant as well. We are going up to bid at the end of February for this. We just completed one hundred percent. Design last month. And we, the notes to proceed will be in June, and then completion is stated for September thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight. So that is a look at the new plant. Next slide please. So just to reiterate some of the reasons that we touched on in describing this problem, but why it all is converging into why we need a new plant. I've mentioned that our plant is pretty old, but newest parts of it are from the nineteen seventies. And as we were picking out or testing different treatment processes over the past several years, we're finding. Meanwhile, our plant is literally starting to fall apart. It's definitely older than me. It's fifty years old and aging. And in the winter, I believe, of twenty twenty-two, we had our first failure of the rapid sand filtration beds. They ruptured and they broke, and that means we had to take at least two of them offline immediately, which meant in the middle of winter, when we normally aren't relying on sand and filters. We had to use the slow sand filters, which don't remove as much organics. So that, again, was producing suboptimal water treatment right there.
Is that why the numbers are up?
Not right now, but this was a couple of years ago. I think we did have a HA-85 levels that did increase because of this. Right. So this is one of the reasons that we need to rebuild the new plant. We also have expanding regulations. What we're finding just with DPVs alone, we need a plant that can adapt to evolving regulations. And we've gotten a good life out of this one, I'd say. And we've gotten our money's worth from the nineteen seventies, but this plant is no longer able to adapt to today's regulations. And we know that there are ones coming down the pipe. We, there, this constant, science is constantly evolving, technology is constantly evolving, what we can detect in water is constantly evolving. So we need a plant that's a bit more modern and a bit more nimble to be able to adapt to that. And then finally, as I've mentioned, climate change is really changing the equation. Not only do we have new regulations, but we have new water essentially that we're working with now. The extreme precipitation events are changing the composition of our reservoir water. And like I've said, treatment plants are really kind of giant chemistry. Chemistry problems that you're trying to solve. So we are having to have a plant that can, is now calibrated. To what a reservoir composition looks like today. And if there's anything else to mention. Oh, one other thing too. We did determine that clarification, the dissolved air flotation that I mentioned, just adding that alone wouldn't be. Just adding that alone and leaving the rest of the plant around it, we did determine that that would just be too risky. Trying to add a new treatment step to a plant that was literally starting to fall apart and didn't have the redundancy that it needed. Was too risky in terms of being able to continuously supply water and treat that water as well. So last slide. Thank you. So this is a picture of, from September, of our new backwash facility, right before it was. Completed, I think it was a month or two before. So this is what we've been calling phase one of our construction. And we need this new backwash facility. And backwash is a term that means, it's essentially a backwashing and washing the filters. We have to wash the filters every day. So this is the facility that enables that. We had a backwash facility that was located in the, in the plant, of course, from the nineteen seventies. It was relying on equipment that's no longer manufactured. I'm not even sure the company still exists. It doesn't have service, it doesn't have parts. And it didn't have redundancy.
So what is the backwash water go?
Backwash water goes into, it goes back to, right, right, goes to our lagoons, which are the treatment part, is the lagoons, and then out to. For the work, which is considered the receiving water.
A brook.
So this was, as I mentioned, phase one, and this will enable us to continue and move forward with construction of the rest of the new plant. Yep.
Counselor Delgado has a question. Go ahead, counselor.
No, thank you, guys. I, I'm gonna try to be as quick as possible, because I do have to jump off, but I appreciate. The chairs putting this meeting together and Josh and your team for coming out, just because I was curious about this. I had heard a lot about, you know, the notifications. I gotta be honest, I don't know if these notifications go out to everyone. And that uses water source, but I gotta be honest, I don't recall seeing any, and I've had neighbors that I've asked as well. So wanted to ask that question, because I think this is important. Obviously, that you guys are putting this out there and teaching folks, but I think there are some folks that aren't even really aware, so. Unless we're living under a rock or something, that's my first thing. And I guess. My initial question is, is the, is the water safe to drink? Is kind of my, my answer, and, and, you know, thinking of other residents who may be pregnant, maybe whatever, might not know that. What's in this water? Like, is this safe for us to drink? Do we need a filtration system to drink our water?
Sure, counselor. Well, if you receive a bill, you receive the notification. It's in with your bill. All of the notifications. So you, you may not be reading your bill, or in some cases, if you're a renter. The bill will go to the landlord or the property owner. But if you're receiving a bill, every customer gets that notice with their bill, okay?
I might be throwing, I might be reading the bill, saying like, yep, I'm gonna pay it. I might throw out the rest, not realizing it, but. I'm not the only person that's, that said that this is kind of news to them, so, but yeah.
Sure, and we also, so we also do a press release with the public notification as well, so. And that almost always gets picked up by local media, whether it's television news or periodicals. So there are certain boxes that we have to check in, in order to stay in compliance with notification. And we certainly do all those, and we've tried to be transparent as we possibly can. And I, I think we also, Jamie and the team also do neighborhood council meetings. So, you know, I think we're, we're out there and answering the questions, and we certainly. Are happy to come to meetings like this at request to discuss this. So again, if, if there's folks and you need to schedule a meeting with a specific neighborhood council, we find that those are very effective. In getting the message across. It's a little more folksy, and people may not be reading it, but when, when you, when we get in front of them and they ask questions. I think they walk away with much better feeling, typically because they have a face, not this one. But they have other faces to, to, to listen to and ask questions.
Yeah, and I'll also add too, that we do post it on social media as well, and as Josh mentioned, it does usually get picked up by the news media. We do also send an advisory kind of memo along with the public notification to all city counselors in advance. Just because we know that you may get questions from your constituents, and we'll continue to do that as well. And just as of this last round, we did include a fact sheet for city counselors to refer to if they get questions from their constituents. That might have some anticipated questions. But also, please, if you ever do get any questions, please feel free to send them along to us. It's, we understand it's a really kind of a technical, complicated topic, so sometimes it's easier just to answer questions individually in many ways, to talk things through with people.
And then just, I, I, I'll just add also, the, the public notification itself, there is required language in there. It's not language that we choose. It's part of regulatory compliance. And so you'll see oftentimes that. Our press release. Puts it more into layman's term, layman's terms sometimes than the actual notice, the regulatory requirement, that specific notice. So. If you're, if you're good with that, we can go right to, is the water safe to drink? Yes. The water is safe to drink. The notification goes out based upon the required regulatory language. When you go past these, but the concern with these compounds is consumption over a lifetime or decades. And we're certainly not gonna see that here. We're gonna have a new treatment plant online here. We've already started. We've completed the first phase. We're bidding construction here by the end of this month, and we'll have shovels in the ground. Come, come June of this year. So we'll be, we'll be building. And again, a lot of this. If, if you looked at the numbers and Jamie had the slide on that, it, it's not like we're quadruple the, the limits. We're right at the limit in most cases, year after year. The technology of our existing treatment plants just cannot keep up with that, nor was it designed to. So I think we've squeezed as much as we can out of our treatment plants and continue to adjust that on a daily basis. But the end, the end is in sight for a new treatment plant and coming into compliance. And by all accounts, except for very few cases, the water is absolutely consumable.
And so if, if, we understand people have different risk tolerance as well. Some people read the notice, and, and if they want to avoid it, you did ask about filters. We get that question a lot. And as, as far as we know, there are no filters that are certified to remove HA-85, no home filters that would remove it. So in order to avoid consuming it, the, really the only other option is to drink bottled water, if people feel that that is a risk they don't.
Got it. I appreciate that. I can, I can definitely, you know, appreciate the fact that, you know, your facility has kind of. Lived its useful life, because my, one of my questions is gonna be like, you know, I know back in the day, and I'm sorry if you got hammered with this. You know, in all the meetings, but I know back in the day, it's like, Springfield Water was like the best in the country. We thought about bottling it, so I'm just like. What happened from then till now? So it seems like aging infrastructures are part of that issue. On top of, you know, like you guys mentioned, the, the higher than normal precipitation rates. So for me, I just want to make sure that I'm, you know, giving back the information to, to my constituents. Who, who, you know, raise a concern, which is, which is normal. But that was, that was pretty much the big question. If, if you guys could share, whatever you guys share with the council, if they could leave that with like my mailbox or something, that'd be great. Or if there's something digital, like a digital version of this PowerPoint, I'd love to have that, so I can explain it to folks. Other than that, I want to give a shout out to Josh, to your crew. I had a water main break on my street a couple of weeks ago. I'm sure this is par for the course for you guys, but the guys came out and, you know, rapidly did a great job and, and taking care of it. I think I noticed it before it became a bigger issue. And shout out to Theo, who's on your team as well, because he helped me out with an issue. A couple of years back. So, so I appreciate everything that your team is doing.
Great, counselor, appreciate it. And remember, we're not the only ones who are, are experiencing this issue. There are other water plants, and it's really because the, the, the issues, the regulatory issues didn't exist. When almost all of the water treatment plants in the Commonwealth were built. So that's just a fact. So our infrastructure has outlived its useful life, and the regulations continue to evolve and change. And so we don't have technology that can keep up currently, but we will soon. So appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, counselor. I have a quick question. When did we start detecting the H double A five?
Well, that goes back to Sue.
Yes, so when, we've always detected it since we started testing when the regulation came online in nineteen ninety-nine.
Nineteen ninety-nine, so that's how many years? Twenty-five years? That's, that's decades.
But below, yes, but below the regulatory limits.
Okay, and prior to that, we weren't doing, it wasn't required. So we don't know. We don't know what those numbers are, because we weren't testing for it, correct?
But we've always been lower until.
Until.
Except for twenty eighteen.
Two, twenty eighteen. So the new facility won't come, come on until twenty-eight, which would be a decade. Since those high numbers were detected, right?
Yep.
But you're saying right now that you feel confident that that doesn't cause cancer?
Yeah, you know, I'm not an epidemiologist, but by all accounts, the water is safe to drink. If it wasn't, you'd be told not to drink the water immediately, and that's the regulatory framework. And I would also suggest that in all of these regulations, there are safety factors that are built in to what those are. And again, like I said before, we're not, it's not as if we're ten times what the limits are.
Yep.
So we're right at the limit. Typically, sometimes we may be, you know, ten. You know, ten, twenty, thirty parts per million um higher, but it's never like we're two times or three times or four times, so.
But can certain individuals like infants be more susceptible to uh even a lower amount like this? Where it's not astronomical, but it's higher than the norm?
Um, I think there's possibilities for anything and that's not our area of expertise, but what I would, what I would suggest is. The language that is provided to us in the notices say that if you have that concern, you should talk to your physician about it. Um, so that is in the notices. Um, so we can't really speak to what other, what people's specific concerns are. Um, but in general, those notices speak for themselves. The required language speaks to those individuals that may wanna talk to their physician. But that's a very, very small percentage of individuals.
Tim, what are the categories of those individuals, pregnant people?
I think it's pregnant, pregnant, nursing, immunocompromised, I don't.
Mass D E P also has a fact sheet that's helpful in explaining more of the health effects than we can, because we're not physicians.
Yeah, and and we don't set those, obviously, we don't set those numbers. Those numbers are are set by the regulatory agencies.
I believe what the D E P fact sheet says is children um and infants are more susceptible to chemicals in general. Like H A A five, I don't think there's been specific studies on it. Um, so that's, that's what the language reads in the D E P, so that's, I think it's just kind of an all encompassing.
Great, uh, did you have any questions?
Well, if I can get over my intimidation with all the scientific people here, well. This guy who scrambled to get out of a C minus in my science classes. I'm just a resident of Springfield and. I've lived in Chalmers Street, Springfield, Ward Seven, East Forest Park for forty-one years. And I've never called a councilman, beefing or saying an attaboy on any issue until this. And uh I figured ten gets enough of our snow removal and uh. Code enforcement violations and people driving around like being chased by the Taliban. He doesn't need it from me. But I did call him on this because unlike the councilman, I've read every one of those notices in great detail and I. Followed the links and I tried to grasp what the situation is because I, like many others. Fit into one of those categories you just described and have had cancer in my house and we all know people who have are frail. And for whom this is a concern and for whom your ears perk up when this happens. I I think, if I may. The uh, as I read these things, and you alluded to it early, but I think you come up a little shy. That in the public notification, it is a very technical topic. Maybe required to put some of that in there, but I think it'd be helpful if you distilled this into a story that is understandable by the people. Who receive it. Uh, I mean, the story is, you have fifty-year-old plant, doesn't work anymore. You've got some risk here, here's what you can do. And it's what I read in these documents that bear with me says. H A A, H A A five are possibly carcinogenic to humans based on evidence of carcinogenicity. Lab animals and limited evidence in people. This from a D E P stuff. That young children, pregnant women, and those who become pregnant may be potentially more susceptible to the risk of H A, H A A five. D E P says, the effects that have been reported in experimental animals exposed to high levels of H A A five. And other disinfection products include effects on liver, kidneys, reproductive systems, on and on, and the significance is. Uncertain. And then bear with me one more minute. The literature says some people who drink water containing a low acidic acids in excess. Of contaminated levels over many years have an increased risk of getting cancer. And like Brian indicated, ten years of a marginally excessive. Rate of these chemicals is of great concern to me. And I don't have any beef about the capability and the effort of water and sewer in. Coming up with a permanent solution. I think a little weak in the interim solution in that. Uh, you know, you're given basically monopoly powers. It is our obligation to be somewhat. Alert to monopolistic powers and be skeptical of monopolistic powers. And so I sense a diminishment of the effect of these chemicals in your presentation and in the literature. And I'm more concerned about it uh than I I than maybe I need to be, but I am. And I think you have an obligation, not only on the technical side of the plant. And the interim measures, but on the consumer relation side. Here we are, if you've ever been around to uh any of the supermarkets in Springfield. Seeing old people like me lug out water cases because we rarely use our. Increasingly expensive water supply at our home and drink from bottled water. Uh, I think you should have a, some type of a situation where you expand the definition of your uh program that gives. Bear with me again. You grant a. One second. Yeah, we have a customer assistance program. People can apply and they get a reduction in the cost of their public water if they meet certain criteria. I think it's a reasonable criteria that if you think you are in a. Household that is uh. Sensitive to these types of uh conditions that you should be able to apply and maybe you will use the uh the uh reduction. To help subsidize your increasing cost of bottled water. That way you're not only doing the engineering, scientific. Technical problem, you're also dealing with customers who are really granting you. Uh, rate-setting authority but for the occasional review by a council and maybe some others. I think that you have that obligation, so that's just my two cents that that it should be pointed out. And like the counselor said earlier, I was around here when one of the founding fathers of the. Of the Water and Sewer Commission, Jack Lyons. Used to sit over in that mayor's office over there and talk about selling Springfield water. And Jack Lyons was not a giddy man. This was an engineer.
We know Jack.
Yeah, uh, not prone to levity and he was. He would get very excited about uh selling the Springfield water, so that's the framework from which. I, as a resident, recall Springfield water and the taste of it and the quality of it. Particularly when you look around the country and you see people with water systems are being dragged through courts, being dragged through uh. Various governmental agencies to respond. I don't even mention names because this doesn't compare. But it is a situation, I think you should be more responsive to the consumer. Uh, and whether it be in expanding a customer assistance program or in. Finding some type of water filtration systems that are at the faucet, so people, you can use your buying power and your. And your uh technical knowledge to identify what they are, to give us a running head start to deal with this, because you're. Ten years is a long time to ask people, sure, but the plant wasn't built for today. But ten years is a long time to be ingesting this level when all the words are. Soft words, like we're uncertain uh that it is uh is prone to affect only those. All qualifiers there, we don't know. We just don't know.
That is correct.
And I think the obligation of sewer and water is to care and help out the consumer side of this. Who does read their bills and does read your.
Those that do.
And and respond accordingly.
Yeah, you know, I I I'm appreciative uh of all of that, that that's very well put and I think we're sensitive to all of those things and I think. Some of, in in the context of some of um what we have been involved with, with some of the leaders, not just in the nation, but in the globe. And disinfection byproducts with the folks over at UMass. And and hearing the background of how the regulations and remember, we don't control that alarmist language that's in there. Um, we don't control the um uh the the setting of the limits. At all, and then the the research and the documentation that's available is very limited. And a- as an example, um, when we've met with um UMass about this. And they have some of the leading experts globally um in this. You know, the studies and and I don't wanna be misquoted in this, but this is just an anecdotal example. The studies that show H A A five may cause cancer. Are not like a study of H A A five specifically. It's a study of um water systems over two hundred fifty thousand. Um, people that use chlorine and is there more bladder cancer in those groups? It doesn't go into specific individuals. It doesn't go into whether you smoke or there's air pollution or anything else. They're very broad studies, which is why when you've looked, you haven't been able to find literature. That supports this much causes this. There there is nothing like that, and so I think a lot of times in the regulatory. World in an abundance of caution, they set limits and those limits also have safety factors within them, so. I don't think anybody on our side of the equation tries to diminish the effects of this whatsoever. Um, we live this every day because we come to these meetings, we go in front of citizens councils, we answer calls. All of, all of that and we do it very willingly and and everybody here is very proud of the water, just like. Everybody has been in Springfield. We we live this twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, so. I don't have an answer for you um to some of those things. I think you have a couple of good ideas we can bring back to to this shop. Um, but I would also say we're we're not alone. I would also say that, you know, trying to provide the best possible. Um, value service to our customers is very important to us and so. How we get from point A to point B um has to be tracked and thought about very carefully. The the treatment plant that we're proposing is over three hundred million dollars and should set us up for the next. Fifty to seventy-five years and we'll have the flexibility to um adjust to. What's next in the regulatory framework, right? We have, we have to leave space at the plant because. You you know, there's a lot of new chemicals and compounds that we didn't know about five years ago that are now. Um, imminently everywhere um and and will be regulated soon or are in the process of being regulated, so. Um, it's a, it's drinking water compliance is harder and harder for every single water provider. Um, just because of technology is advancing so rapidly. Um, the ability to measure chemicals at such small um doses. It is a reality now and you have limited amounts of studies that are saying. This could cause cancer and so they put a, they put a regulatory limit on it, so I'm not gonna diminish that whatsoever um because we shouldn't. But when you, when you read the language and you follow the links and the EPA and the D E P websites, they'll take you to places. Because we have followed all of those and there's nothing, there's nothing you can grab onto there. It's very, it's very nebulous. It says, well, it could, it may. And so could and may isn't will or. And and so I I think um, I I appreciate everything that you've said. I think we're gonna bring it back to the shop, but. We continue to adjust daily to minimize the production of D V Ps um by looking at. I mean, in the past four years since we've done this, we've really changed a lot of what we do, so we get daily. Uh, we get daily returns on what the residuals are. We have a mapping program. We make daily adjustments to chlorine. And that can depend on what the weather is happening and what our raw water looks like, so we have a lot more data that we process. On a daily basis to optimize treatment, to reduce the production uh of D V Ps, so.
Josh, that, thank you. Uh, I just wanna make sure Helen gets a chance to to speak and I know she has to leave this meeting early, so. Helen, do you have anything to add?
Oh, you're muted, Helen.
You're muted.
Yes, thank you very much and thank you, uh Josh and team for being here. Very much appreciated. I think when we met uh to, uh, is that Mr. Ryan who was speaking earlier?
Um, Mr. Warren.
Mr. Warren, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Warren was speaking earlier and I think we had that conversation before around. Distilling the information in a way that our consumers um can uh take it in in a way that they understand. And that has not happened. Your presentation today was very uh wonderful on some levels. Uh, talking about the disinfection byproducts is helpful, but when you start to talk and I'm talk about. Um, the techno, technical pieces, our consumers get lost, Josh. They absolutely get lost. I just left a meeting at the Department of Elder Affairs, uh which is under my cabinet. And the questions that came up around water and water safety. And when I talked to them about, well, and we're going to have a new treatment plant in ten years and they said to me, I'll be dead, Helen. You know, I mean, it's the reality of what they're feeling, the weight of this particular issue. So to uh Mr. Warren's point, is there a way for us to distill this in a way that our consumers can read it? And not have to follow links, but are able to um be able to uh just. Just get it in a way they can understand. And I think Counselor Satinello asked the longitudinal question. And and I hear you saying that you can't answer that question for us because of of what's happened over time and the technical issues. You've asked, um, you've said young children, pregnant women, nursing, immune compromise uh are more susceptible. To H A A five and I I think I heard that as well. And so we're asking individuals in our community to go to their pediatrician, primary care provider. Um, and have that individual um really be the one to interpret uh the language as far as the notice that. Uh, you sent out. And perhaps it's important for you to have an epidemiologist on staff who can distill this down. In the way that the consumers um can uh partake of. I'll just say one more thing. I also just left a meeting with our veterans and they are very concerned about, obviously, chemicals. What they've gone through and it has nothing to do oftentimes with uh what uh we're talking about. H A A five, but chemicals and their experience with chemicals in water and they're asking uh concern. So I am going to uh set up a meeting with the Department of Veteran Services as well as um the Elder Affairs. Uh, community and I'm hopeful that uh you will be able to give a presentation that will satisfy some of these very important questions. That I keep getting over and over again and they think I should know because they trust me. So they trust me when I give them information and I need some other trusted voices. Um, with accurate information to come to some of these meetings. So thank you, Counselor Allen. Thank you, Counselor Satinello. Uh, thank you, Josh and team. I appreciate your time.
Um, Helen, just uh real quick, um. I had a, I'm gonna have a meeting on this very shortly next month on the forever chemicals. Uh, that we're facing throughout every community and uh Josh, as you stated, like ninety-eight percent of the people have it in their blood. Um, but Springfield's tap water up to now, I don't think has any forever chemicals in it. It's been tested. So that's a good thing so far. But I think by uh by the government has to regulate this now, right? They have to come in and. Yeah, it's coming.
But the question around the, the reason the chlorine is used, I mean, some of these very simple explanations. Have not been given to the community. There's simple explanations for why uh we're treating the water the way uh we are. And what are the potential risks if we did not do that? And so I think those are the pieces I'm interested in having our residents understand. And have them ask the questions around the longitudinal impacts and those with um health indices. That might uh be something they want to consider in contacting primary care providers and pediatricians.
Thank you, Helen.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Helen. We appreciate that and I and I think, you know, at the neighborhood council with uh Counselor Gobian, we had good reception. And I think we certainly continue to try to create a message that's consumable, so we'll, we'll continue to shape that. Jamie?
We're working on a video right now too that will have some more in-depth information about H A five and worms and.
And I think we've also spoken to some degree of the importance of chlorine as probably the single most important public health. Discovery in the past five hundred years, so um, you know, and and that's a factual statement, so. Um, two hundred years, whatever it is, so i- in any case. Um, Helen, I I appreciate all of that and we're gonna continue to uh try to improve how we communicate this to our customers.
All right, just a question. Why do we have different uh, different pumping stations have different readings? Why?
Uh, what, which type of pumping stations?
Pump stations, they're just the sample stations.
So why are they different?
Locations.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's just location.
So we test at eight locations in Springfield and Ludlow. As the H A, some of the D V Ps as they form, some form over time and some will degrade over time. As the H A, some of the D V Ps as they form, some form over time and some will degrade over time. So you're not going to have the exact same number at all of those eight stations at the same time.
But what, why would they be so different? Some of them are much higher than others.
So you're different, but you're talking parts per billion.
That's right.
So it's a very small amount. So, you know, a sixty and a fifty, it's not that different.
You're not, you're not seeing swings of five hundred to, to ten. And I think what the, you have to think about the distribution network of pipes in the entire city, right? If, if you have an industry in one part of the city that is using a lot of water, it's pulling in more water, right? So that wa- that water is less likely to form because it's, it's younger water. It's not as old. And so you'll see, uh, as Jamie indicated, in parts of the city where we have older water age. We'll open up hydrants to pull in fresh water to eliminate the amount of time for disinfection byproducts to form. So throughout that entire system, it's a complex plumbing network where depending on who's using what, it's, it's just different. The use patterns are different in different neighborhoods and different parts of the city. And so the eight locations are actually there to represent the whole city. And so the, we would never have an expectation that those numbers would be the same. They would be variable because there's different use patterns and, and different profiles. Of how water gets to those locations during the course of every day of the year.
Cause I noticed Catalina.
Yep.
Which is my neighborhood.
Yeah.
That's normally very hot. It's normally very high. Is that because we're using too much water or not?
So it's also pump stations that's pulling water, um, and some of the D V Ps degrade. Uh, when there's lower chlorine and that station doesn't have a low, that's pretty good for, this is your, very safe.
Okay. Chlorine is good.
Remember, chlorine is the case of safety.
Well, that's good. So, um, we're coming up on an hour here. Um, the, um. There was, the only other question we had that I was hoping we could touch on today is the schedule and. I don't need to know how much the plant costs as much as, as are we gonna be on schedule to, to start and stuff?
Yeah, we're going, we're going to, uh.
February for bid.
Yeah, we're gonna be bidding here in three weeks.
Couple of weeks here.
So, yeah, I, by all, all accounts, we're not moving our bidding date whatsoever. Um, so bidding will start in February and then I think in June we'll be, uh, opening bids to award. It's a very large project, so bidders need a long time to, um, to, to respond and put their bids together. Uh, and then we'll, we'll, we'll be awarding sometime in June. Is that right, Dale?
That's correct. So we're, we're gonna be opening, I think, in either late April, early May. You're gonna have an extensive period for reviewing the bids. But our target for a notice to proceed is June.
Yeah, and there was something, there was a letter to the editor or something a week ago about project labor agreement. There was some, could you just explain?
Yeah, that, that's, um, that's something that the board voted for us to negotiate and look at and we're doing that. So it's nothing that I can really speak about right now, um, because it's an open process.
Um, what's that building there?
Well, you, that looks like Tom Shay. It's probably somewhere in Scotland.
It's a water treatment plant in Scotland.
I, I would also just, I wanna apologize if folks would think we weren't looking at them, cause we're looking at the screen, but the camera's behind us. So Helen, I am looking at you at the moment, although it doesn't look that way. So, um, I wanna apologize for that. So, uh, a- again, uh, we have estimates of construction at around two hundred and eighty million dollars. And then, uh, the balance of that is all of the ancillary work that has to take place, uh, other than construction, uh. Engineering, construction oversight, et cetera. So we're at about three hundred and twenty-five million dollars total. Uh, construction estimate.
Tom, did you have a question you wanna ask since we're gonna wind up here in a second?
Sure. And, uh, that it, that's Windsor Castle, but I can get you one in Scotland too. So I guess, um, to follow up on Tim's question, um. You know, it was interesting in the paper, but also your minutes that, um, council advised, um, not to do a project labor agreement. So at this point, you're going out to bid in less than three weeks. Uh, is that still an open topic? Are you gonna revisit it at your February fourteenth board meeting? Or is it full steam ahead?
Uh, you, you know, again, like I said, it's not a topic that we're gonna discuss. We're in the process of negotiating the terms of a P L A. And that's what the board voted to do. So, uh, we'll bring that back to the board once we have, uh, a tentative agreement on it and we're gonna go from there.
Okay, just to confirm, you're moving forward with the P L A. Thank you.
Certainly, yes, we are.
Okay. Well, so we have an action item separate from what prompted by Ray and Helen's, um, adding on to. The better communication, whatever. How, how do we proceed on that with the consumer letter and stuff? You guys gonna meet separately and try to come up with something?
Yeah, I'm, go ahead.
Well, um, I'm not sure if you, um, received in the memo that we sent in January, but we did, um, provide like an updated fact sheet. Based on our meeting the last time with the subcommittee, um, that we thought could be helpful for you. So, um, if you all wanted to take, we have copies. If you wanted to take it, maybe give us some feedback. Um, unfortunately, when we mail the notices with our bills, it's hard to add another sheet of paper. Um, but we could definitely look into that or some other way to get additional information. We also have all this information on our website. Um, and Jimmy, I don't know if you.
Go ahead.
And neighborhood councils, if you have any groups you're.
Senior centers we visit as well. I'm gonna have done a few presentations, so.
So this is a nice handout, to, to say it's perfect for what we want. Would there also be a new letter? Would this be the letter?
The letter can't change because that's a regulatory.
Eighty percent of the letter is mandated by D E P.
So the problem is nobody reads, right? The problem is.
We're making a video.
And, and, but we, we actually like the feedback from the folks that, that read. Um, that's fantastic.
Look at things on their bills.
Yeah, yeah, you do if you look. But it, the, the issue is how do we reach out to folks who just pay their bill? They don't, they don't pay attention to the notice. They see something in the newspaper and that's it.
Or the people that Helen just met with.
Well, right, so, uh, the best thing that, the most effective tool that we have is coming to neighborhood council meetings and group meetings. Um, and getting those scheduled. That is the most effective because then we can answer those questions from those, from, from whoever is asking. And they always feel better, at least seeing a face and being able to say, all right, those look like honest people. They're not B S ing us. Um, they answered all of my questions. And just to, to speak to kind of what Helen said about epidemiologists. We, we don't do any of the things that D E P and EPA set the regulatory limits at. It's beyond what we do. We're, we're, we're not, we don't want to be epidemiologists. And when, when they say, go see your doctor, we're like, w- we get frustrated with that, as, as frustrated as you and every customer. Because they don't give us the information to go ahead. We've asked for the information, well, tell us. We get the calls. But we don't get the information back from them because they don't have it. And, um, we've been in this round and round dance. With some of the regulatory folks about, um, having them be on these calls. And having them be at the public meetings and having them answer some of the questions and having them, um, maybe take a look at. Um, the links to their pages. And it's just, and, and I'm not trying to throw them under the bus. They have their own limitations in what they, what they can do. Um, but it, it's been a struggle to be able to reach people and then to be able to answer the questions about. What should you do if you're in this group? And it, it doesn't say it will cause, it says it may. You may be concerned, not that you should be concerned. And so there's just a lot of ambiguity, um, in, in all of this. Listen, if we were ten thousand times the limit and you were being told not to drink the water, it'd be very clear, right? And, and we're not. And so I, I'm not stuck in any punches here. Um, I think we've addressed this head on and we will continue, uh, to do that. And we're open to, uh, any and all suggestions. Um, and we'll continue to try to do a better job in communicating this. And, and, um, as Katie said, we do have, from the last meeting, we did develop kind of a boil-down sheet that should be more consumable. Uh, we have that, we'll get it out to you guys.
Now, could we maybe have that be the agenda for our next meeting, whenever, whenever that is, going over a revised package or something? That we see before it goes out, kind of thing. Um, what's a timeframe for you?
You've got one minute, counselor.
I know.
And I got a three, I got a three thirty that I have to be here.
I would say we meet again, um, I don't know. Later in March, second half of March, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, why, why don't we, why don't, let us go back and we have, when's our next sampling round?
First week of March.
Yeah, so let's, let's go to.
The results will.
April. April will have the next round of results and you, you don't know, we're on the borderline of being in compliance. We, 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 we remain hopeful every quarter. You know, every time we remain hopeful, we get an eight-inch rainstorm, so.
All right, well, thank you. So aim for early April.
Yeah.
Um, thanks for coming.
Thank you.